Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Campbell?
Here.
Dempsey?
Here.
Hill?
Here.
Crowe?
Here.
Mensah?
Here. Need a, um, motion to excuse Commissioner Button?
I move to excuse Commissioner Button.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes. Okay, announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports. This evening, we have a presentation by Dr. William Pearson, interim superintendent of the Mount Clemens School District. So, if you would like to come up.
Thank you. Thanks for inviting me. We have put together a budget the last several months. Teresa Davis just walked in, Assistant Superintendent for Finance has got to do with that.
Dr. Pearson, can I ask you to use the microphone there to make sure that people are picking you up on?
Thank you. Teresa Davis, Assistant Superintendent for Business just walked in, and she's helped out a lot in terms of budget that I'm going to present, and just some background information about where we are. I come from a district of, I was a superintendent for 20 years in South Lyon and Southwest Oakland County, so, you know, I've been doing this a long time. And I retired in June, and Mike DeValle from the ISD called and asked if I could fill in for half a year or so, and I said yes. And it's now the whole year. And now, as I present this, I think I'm going to be here next year. I had to freeze my retirement to do so, but I'm willing to do that. I like the people that I've been working with. I'm getting pretty enamored with some of the kids and the teachers, and when we finish here, I'm going to the district basketball game to make the second half there at the high school. And we have a lot of work to do, as I'm sure a lot of you know. First, we started with the budget. We put a budget together that made sense, so we know where we are. I'll go through that. And we've been in deficit for eight years, and Treasury took over Mount Clemens. In other words, they want to see what we're about, what our budget looks like, and see if they can help us. Michigan Department of Education had about 40 districts that they were working with that were in deficit. Deficit where there's no savings account, there's no fund equity, and that's where Mount Clemens is. Then Treasury took over 11 of the districts this past fall, and Mount Clemens is one of them. I'm going to show you how we're going to get out of deficit in two years, assuming that our enrollment doesn't decrease more than 10 students a year. We increased 30 students last fall. It's a small district. We had 1122, and we're about 1150 this year, so we increased for the first time in a long time. If you look at the first slide here, you can see that this line here is where you want to be above that line. That means you've got a little savings account, like I'm sure most of us have at home. So, we, in '06-'07, '08, is where we hit the area where we are now in deficit. And so, the last eight years, we've been in deficit. And I wasn't here, but it took a tremendous downslide in the number of students. It's all based on student enrollment. We get $8,007 per student. So, we, in Mount Clemens, in about 11, hit the bottom about 1112, and then we started getting out, going towards getting out of deficit. And then this year, we're going back lower a little bit. A lot of that was due to the opening of King Elementary. I think it was a good idea to try it, to see if we could get more kids, but the expenditure was too much. As I'm going to show you, we wanted to move the K-5 kids from King to Seminole, so that we only have one elementary school. King's not closing. It's just that we're going to keep the preschool there, the GSRP, the Head Start, and we're going to move the K-5 kids over to Seminole. We need to cut almost $2 million out of a 11 and 1/2 million budget. That's a high percent, okay? And the reason why Treasury put us in the top tier is because our percentage of deficit to expenditures is about 18 percent, and only Mackinac City was higher than us. But we're going to get out in two years, and I need everybody's help, because we need to maintain enrollment, if not increase enrollment. And that'll be our key. So, as you can see here, you know, the top line is, you know, our expenditures and then revenue. We started spending more. See, we crossed over here about 1112, and so, we started, our expenditures were greater than our revenue, which got us in deficit. So, Treasury said to us, you know, "We've got to meet with you." And Teresa and I went up there, and we met with them in January. It's good to be face-to-face with people. I asked to go up there, so I could show them what we were going to present to the board to get out of deficit. And they listened to us, they bought into our plan, and they said, "Okay, you're going to be EDEP District." In other words, Enhanced Deficit Elimination Plan. EDEP is Enhanced Deficit Elimination Plan. So, if they didn't believe in our plan, and they didn't think we could get out of deficit, they would put us under fiscal stress, take us to the governor's office, the principal's office, and then they would do, have one of these choices, which could be an emergency manager. We do not want an emergency manager. We don't need anybody in Lansing taking us over. That's not a good thing. We need to do it ourselves, and gladly, and good for us, they're going to put us in EDEP and let us work through our budget issues. They also sent a letter, and it's kind of small here. Basically, what this says is, it's signed by Brian Wiston, the superintendent of the State of Michigan, and by Paul Connors, who is the Office of School Review and Fiscal Accountability. He's ahead of it. And they said, "You're not going to get out of deficit unless you make some expenditure cuts that are needed in terms of people, and if you don't, get employee concessions." And we're about to do both of those. We're going to cut, it comes out to about 1.9 million. We've made a few changes, but it's pretty close to $2 million. Like I said, out of 11 and 1/2 million revenue, that is a large amount of money. Now, we get about $3 million also in grant money. But grant money, you get the dollars, you have to expend it out. And we, you know, spend that in a variety of ways. But this is our general fund. 11 and 1/2 million that I talk about is our general fund. In other words, salaries, benefits, and other things that we do throughout the year to make sure kids get educated. So, I'm bringing to the board to cut one less secondary secretary, one less elementary principal, and that's taking King K-5 kids and moving them to Seminole. I already met with the kindergarten roundup King parents and explained last week what we plan on doing and why we plan on doing it. One less assistant superintendent. See, you've got to have big chunks of money to be able to get out of deficit. Technology, 15,000. Security, 47,000. That's really at the elementary level. We're going to move the middle school that's on the west side of the high school over to the east side, put them on the first floor, have the high school on the second floor. I mean, they already ride the same bus, they already eat in the same cafeteria, but they'll eat in the cafeteria different times. Middle school eat at one time, high school eat another time. And that is enabling us to cut back a little bit on technology and security. Four less custodians. We're going to work harder with less people. Plus, you know, if we don't have K-5 kids at King, and we don't have middle school kids on the west side, we're going to save some time in terms of custodian. It also saves us money in heat and cooling and things like that. Maintenance department, we're cutting two out of the maintenance department. One less secondary principal. We have a middle school principal right now and a high school principal. And we're going to go to one secondary principal, since they're all going to be on the east half of the high school. And we can do this. One less teacher. I'm hoping to do that. I think we can. I think we're going to have to add one teacher to the elementary, but I think we can get rid of, or reduce one teacher. It's the wrong way to say it, sorry. Switching to hard cap insurance. Right now, there's an 80, you have two choices in the State of Michigan. You have an 80/20 percentage-wise, and then you have a hard cap that the state has come up with. The hard cap will save the district and the citizens more money throughout, like, the 10-year period. So, we're going to convert to a hard cap. Employee salary concessions, 648,000. Because we're negotiating with teachers, we have another meeting tomorrow, and I'm hoping to wrap up by the end of the month. I'm not going to say what that percent is, but the dollar amount is 648,000. And that's everybody. So, that's a large chunk of the dollars that we plan on saving to get out of a deficit. And then, less cost to run King. We're going to save about $323,000 not to run King as a K-5 building. One of the ways we're going to do that is we're closing one of the wings. Because there's two wings at King, and we don't need to operate one of the wings, we can close the other wing. And the one that stays open will be for GSRP, Head Start, and Early Childhood CI. So, that's the total amount of money. It's a lot of changes, and it's a lot of dollars in terms of savings that we can then, as I'll show you at the end, convert into more opportunities for kids. A couple of things that we want to bring this year, next year, I mean. At the secondary level, we want to offer robotics and drama. And at the elementary, we're working with Treasury. I've been working them for a couple of months, trying to get some dollars. They have a little bit, that they can help districts that are in severe trouble. We want to bring art and PE back to the elementary. Now, I'm not promising that tonight. I'm saying that's what we want to do. We're working in that direction, and that would be really good for the kids. I also want to expand the lunchtime, 10 more minutes, so the kids can get outside at lunch also. They're not getting out of lunch right now. Elementary kids need to get out. One of the way, you know, I showed you how we're going to cut about 2 million, but one of the ways that we're really doing it is through cuts in administration. And as you can, oh, this battery is, oh, there it is, has lasted for years. Okay. Elementary principals, this year, 194,000. These are salary amounts, not the whole cost. It doesn't count FICA and retirement and health insurance, just the salary amounts. We're going to one elementary principal. You can see the savings. We have two secondary principals, one, savings. Directors, 358,000. We're going to cut, go down to 278. And we have 366 in superintendent, and we're going to go and save 88,000. I don't know why the twos are there. But it comes out to 753,284 dollars that, you know, we're going to expand after we get the concessions. And we're saving 363,000, or a 33% reduction in principals, directors, and superintendents. We're all going to be working a lot harder next year. So, I want to show you one more slide. It's not clear, but if you look, this is this year. This is our revenue and expenditure. Next year forecast, I go out five years. So, we're forecasting our revenue based on the factors I'm going to talk about. And if you see the expenditures, going from 12, 264 to 10,4. That's the big cut that we're making this coming year. So, you can see, for the next year, we're going to have more money than we're spending. That's a good thing. And the next several years, we're going to have more money than we're spending. So, you know, it's pretty consistent from, you know, 700 and something to 800,000, 700,000, 800,000. There's the grant dollars, but when you get them from the federal government and the state, you have to expend that amount out. And you can't use it for salary, and you can't use it for benefits. So, when you go down here, next year, right now, we're about a 2.3 million deficit. Because we're going to gain 790,000, 800,000, we're still going to be in deficit next year. And the next year, we make another 800 to the good. So, we're going to take two years to get out, and then we're finally out of deficit. But look how we increased to 8 and 1/2 percent, 15 and 1/2 percent fund equity. That is really, really good in the fourth and fifth year. So, I'm trying to negotiate a four-year contract. We may get there. And that means that after we get out of deficit, the Board of Education can decide, "Okay, what do we want to add? What electives can we add at the secondary level? We know we need to add some of those things that the kids don't have right now. We know if we don't get art and PE, let's say we get one of them, we'll add the other two. Or if we get two of them, we then can add music." We can do some different things, and there are options. The State of Michigan says every district should have a 5% fund equity. And if you don't have a 5% fund equity, you have to go through all this paperwork. There probably won't be the amount of paperwork Teresa does right now, because we're in deficit. But, you know, our goal is to always maintain 5% fund equity. Get more kids back, do more things for kids in the district, and build on the Mount Clemens School District foundation and legacy. But this, these numbers are based on enrollment of only losing 10 kids per year. So, only losing 50 kids in five years. It only takes one year gaining 50, and we're, we have no problem meeting this budget. It's also based on getting $60 from the State of Michigan. It's called per pupil increase, and I want to get 50, 60 bucks this year. The governor's budget came out, and he says that Mount Clemens will get $91. But generally, the House and the Senate, they'll come out with their version pretty quickly, and they usually don't equal the governor. In most years, the governor likes to make people happy, any governor, and then the House and Senate get a little more serious. So, we're basing on $50. That's not a big increase. In some years, we've had 100, 150 throughout the state. And then, teacher reductions a little bit. The retirement rate stays the same. And, oops, I left the concessions. You're not supposed to look at that. But let me show you something. On the enrollment here, the minus 10, if I, watch the numbers up here, right here, these numbers here, you know, where we're in deficit. Oh, oh, sorry, sorry. Yep. If you see the 151, and then the 867, the 1.5, if we change the enrollment to minus 50, you can see the numbers change up there. And what you have, we're in deficit for five years. Just 40 more kids. It's all about enrollment, and that's what's happened to Mount Clemens. But I think some of the good things we're doing, I'm going to walk the King neighborhood with a couple of people. We're going to do that probably on a Saturday to hand out some information, hopefully, and other neighborhoods too, to hopefully get them ready to go to the Mount Clemens schools. And we're going to try some other things too in our marketing committee. But that's just a, you know, short presentation on where we are, what we're going to do, how we're going to get out of deficit after eight years. And people are invested. Like I said, employee concessions are going to come into place, and I feel good things are coming to Mount Clemens. So, and the next thing we're going to work on, now that we've got the budget, and now that we're going to, I hope, settle the teacher contract, we're going to start working on the curriculum instruction and assessment. That's the next big piece coming this spring and this summer, so that we can focus on getting out of priority school status. Because that's what we need to do too, and we can do a better job if we put our best foot forward. So, I'm going to work hard at that, and I hope you work with me. And I can answer any questions if you have any.
Are there any questions from this board?
Sure.
Commissioner Mensah?
Keeping in mind that this board, that there's a school board that runs the school system, what can this board do to assist you with your goals of marketing and spreading good news about the school?
I think one of the things you can do is believe in the presentation. Whoops. Believe in the presentation that you just heard. Understand that we are making sacrifices administratively, and other employees and teachers, and we're going to get out of deficit, because that's the first thing we have to do. If we don't get out of deficit, we borrow money each year to pay, because we get 11 school aid payments, and there's 12 months in a year. And so, because you only get 11 state aid payments, we have, and we don't have any money in fund equity to cover that 12th month, we have to borrow money each year. That's money that should be for kids. And so, you can't, if you get out of deficit and you get that 5% fund equity, you can cover the other month, and you don't have to borrow the dollars that we borrow every year that take away from kids. So, believe in what I'm saying. Believe in that we're going to put a better curriculum and instructional process in place. And help, when you talk to people, say to them, "Good things are coming to Mount Clemens schools. Bring your kids back."
Great. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Do you want to take questions from the audience?
You're welcome.
Do we have any other announcements? No? Okay. Mr., is that your stuff?
I'm good.
Oh, you're good. Okay. So, I know if you needed some time to...
I'm going to go ahead and talk to them.
Oh, okay. Well, good luck. Wish them luck for us.
Yeah, I hope they win.
Paul Beaters.
All right. Adoption of the agenda?
I'd like to move out 10A.
10A will be 9D. Any other changes? Okay. Need a motion? I mean, to doubt. The agenda is amended.
So moved.
Second. Roll call?
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, public participation. This is the time you may address this body. All we ask is that you give us your name, residential address, that you adhere to our three-minute rule. So, those who would like to come forth, please do.
Good evening. Dolores Cusiniak, 250 Euclid. I'm here to represent Kendrick Neighborhood Watch. It seems the past two weeks, around February 10th and February 28th, and again, this past Saturday, seems to be a loud boom in the neighborhood. I heard it, I felt it in my block the week of February 10th. I thought maybe a car collision hit out there. Then they felt it more on Grant and also on Washington. Does anyone know what the boom sound was? Like an explosion.
No.
Did you hear it?
No, I didn't hear it, but I did get a number of calls, and I did check with Sergeant McFadden, and he could find no record of anyone calling, anyone hearing of any booms. We called Selfridge to see if there was something going on out there, and they said there wasn't anything going on out there. So, he just suggested, and I've shared that with one of your neighborhood Kendrick Watch people, that when someone does hear it, call the Sheriff's Department right away, so that they can get out there and try to locate it.
Well, February 10th, I was upstairs in my bedroom, and I actually, like, felt vibration, and I got cat, I even jumped off the bed, like, what's going on, you know? That's when I thought, like, a tire explosion? But it was like, you could feel it. But the second one, February 27th, 28th, I didn't feel it, but I heard it. So, if anyone knows...
Well, if you hear it again, just get the word out, to call right away, and see if we can kind of pinpoint the actual location.
Well, if we do call, I'm not going to say I heard it outside, but where?
Well, hopefully, somebody else can pinpoint it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Gloria Haller, 260 Cass. I've been working out hours. I was unable to get to the last meeting, but I did view it on TV, and I was rather dismayed that the local treasurer ward seems to be sliding downhill. I would recommend Commissioner Campbell maybe rescind that for a while, until people kind of get their heads on straight about what it takes to qualify, what it means. The prior recipients were people, long-term business people, Irene Thestarks, Bill Mangin, and God knows, we've got a lot of people that we never did recognize in time. But when you were given two choices, one of someone who's given 30 years of his life to being school board president and school board member, along with other memberships and other things he's done for children, and you compare that to somebody that has a secondhand shop in the DDA, but then I realized, and this is the reason I'm suggesting that Mr. Campbell maybe rescind this, is it no longer appears to be about the nominee's qualities, but about the nominators. Because I noticed while I nominated Earl, two rich white folks, land folks, nominated Chris, what's her name, Kubik, Max and Ollies. The one lady lives on Bellevue, the other gentleman lives in Seminole Hills, so I guess, and they both have a lot to do with the Art Center and all things that matter in that world, but not in the whole city is a meaning. And I think it's now become political and abused, and I would suggest that Mr. Campbell, like I said, rescind that, and just don't do it until you have a better idea of what really matters. Because here you've got the superintendent here tonight talking about schools, and yet when you had a chance to nominate someone and to accept the nomination of someone who spent 30 years of his life, plus being in a school board, and contributing in other ways to children and the welfare of children in the city, and you let somebody who's been in business 10 years in a junk shop, we'll call it secondhand shop, and say that's more important, that really begs the definition of your priorities. So, I would respectfully request that Mr. Campbell rescind that order, and just don't bother with local treasurer until you get a commission that has a little better sense of what it means. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Jimmy Dixon at 94 Park. I'm here on behalf of 260 North Broadway about a drain. I just want to thank you for, the last time I was here, I talked to you, and a couple of days after I talked with you, they sent a truck out, and they did clean the drain out. So, right now, we haven't had a problem. If it does bag up again, we're going to have to have a camera ran down. But just want to thank you and for all your work. If we all worked together, we could make Mount Clemens a better place to live in. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Administrative responses to issues and questions raised at previous meetings.
Yeah, we just had the one item this week, Your Honor, for the very same address that Mr. Dixon just spoke about. We did take a look at that, as was mentioned. We did clean the main sewer, and if there isn't a remaining problem there, we're going to have to take a look again as to whether something's happened in our main, but we would think that it would be related to the lead from our main, if that was the case, which would be the responsibility of the North Broadway Church of Christ. And then regarding the drain that was creating issues for the church, the Utilities Department did get in touch with First Clinton Township and then Macomb County, and determined that that was a Macomb County drain. And we did contact the county, and we're told that this issue is going to be addressed this week by the county, so the week of March 7th, there should be some action on that front to help with that in the future. And that's pretty much the only thing that I had on my formal report. I am going to make mention of one thing that was brought to my attention before the meeting, since it's at the beginning of the meeting. We had some homeowners, one of which was our Commissioner Mensah, receive a mailing about somebody offering basically water service line coverage and insurance kind of program. Just want to point out that none of these companies are affiliated with the city or sanctioned by the city. So, that's a due diligence thing for individual homeowners. If you're interested in that kind of service, you need to take a look at the company closely and make sure that you feel like you're going to get the service that you're looking for at a cost that you're willing to pay. The city is not affiliated with anybody that offers that kind of insurance product for sewer lines or water lines in the city. So, if you do get a solicitation on that, there's a solicitation that was provided to me that has Mount Clemens listed at the top. It doesn't say anything about the city of or anything like that, but just know that there is no affiliation with any of these companies with the city or sanctioned by the city of any of these companies, just as an FYI. And that's all I had for this week.
Approve of the minutes? Need a motion?
I move to approve the minutes of our last meeting as presented by the board.
Roll call, please.
Hill?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes. General Business, 9A. Approve amended agreement for the law enforcement services originally approved on December 7, 2015. I need a motion.
Approve the amended agreement for law enforcement services between Macomb County and the Macomb County Sheriff's Office and the City of Mount Clemens, beginning January 1, 2016, and running through December 31, 2018, for annual amounts of $2,476,015, $2,522,629, and $2,564,343.
So, city administration was informed by the Macomb So, city administration was informed by the Macomb County Sheriff's Office of an error in the agreement that the city approved for law enforcement services. The attachment A that was submitted by the Sheriff's Office had an error in the spreadsheet that resulted in the cost of vehicles for sheriff deputies not being included in the annual agreement totals. Therefore, city administration is asking for approval of the amended agreement, including the vehicle costs. There's a table that summarizes the original totals and the added vehicle costs and the total new costs for the three-year agreement. I won't go through all of the numbers, but roughly speaking, the vehicle costs range from $182,000 and change up to $186,000 plus in year two and $189,856 in year three, for a total increase to the contract price of $558,464. The information that was supplied includes a sheriff department routing form, which summarizes the issue, as well as the original attachment A and the amended attachment A that does reflect the vehicle costs for the deputies.
Questions, comments? Commissioner Hill?
I just wanted to say that I, I believe that we were surprised that the totals were less for the next three years when we approved that. So, that explains why it was less.
Surprise, surprise.
We do have Captain Roberts here from the Sheriff's Department if we have any questions.
Commissioner Mensah?
Last month, Sergeant McFadden came to the Kendrick Street Neighborhood Watch and had specific statistics on the decreased crime in all of the categories throughout the city. We are getting good service from the Sheriff's Department. We are decreasing major crime. We are increasing the service calls and the contact with residents. I think it's a good deal.
Roll call, please.
Krab?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
9B. Approve upgrade to the High Tech Network Support Service Contract originally approved on June 4th, 2012. Need a motion?
I move to approve a premium level upgrade to the existing High Tech contract for network support services from April 1, 2016, through June 30, 2017, at an added cost of $6,776.25.
Do I have a second? Don't want to move to talk about it? Pardon? Okay, thank you.
So, cover memo-wise, the city has a current contract with High Tech for network support services that was approved for a five-year period at the June 4th, 2012 Commission Meeting. The city administration recommends upgrading this contract to the premium level beginning on April 1st of this year and running through the end of the contract term, which is scheduled to end at June 30, 2017. This should accomplish two primary goals for the city, the first being eliminating a concern that was cited in a prior audit of the city regarding the Finance Department having administrative access to passwords as well as software access levels for employees. And secondly, it would reduce the amount of time that the Finance Director spends on IT functions greatly, and I basically have a note here that better said, reduce the amount of time spent on basic IT functions, including dealing with issues with passwords and things of that sort. Administration has included a cover letter and proposal from High Tech, as well as a memo from our Finance Director, Linda Cunith, for this matter and covering that matter in greater detail. The increased cost of this upgrade is $451.75 per month, and there is a note on the High Tech proposal stating that it's a three-year agreement. However, we made it clear with High Tech that we would not be upgrading for any period beyond June 30, 2017, and they are aware of that 15-month renewal or upgrade plan. The cost over that 15-month period, as was mentioned, is $6,776.25. And I do want to note that under our current practices, we have a fixed expense to the contract that we have with High Tech, but we also have a need for project work, and when we have those kind of needs, we do a time block purchase with the company. That would be the past practice as well as the upcoming practices if this upgrade were to be approved. So, final statement is that we're seeking approval of this premium level upgrade to our network support services contract with High Tech. And then one thing that I will point out, beyond the, the issue on the passwords and the software access levels, there's a variety of things that are covered in the technical services agreement that's, that are provided under this upgrade. These include unlimited remote support, unlimited onsite support as needed at High Tech's discretion. So, in other words, if an issue requires something beyond remote support, High Tech would send a tech onsite on an unlimited basis. There's antivirus, anti-spam, subscription management, quarterly business review, and that's one of the things that might be most attractive for us, is we're going to take a look at how we're doing business on the IT function on a quarterly basis, identify issues, and give us ways forward for making changes if they see a need for those kind of changes during these quarterly business reviews. So, that's basically the, the oversight that I wanted to provide, or the general summary of what we are looking for with this contract.
Okay. Questions? Commissioner Mensah?
First, I'd like to say very clearly that I believe the two reasons given here for moving the Finance Director out of this position are very important, but I really hesitate to approve another contract with High Tech. I'm wondering, you know, I, I understand that we have a contract that goes through June of 2017, but thus far, I think that the service that we have received, based on the number of breakdowns of equipment, has been extraordinary. I don't see an assessment of the equipment, the capabilities, the lines, the fiber, the servers, anywhere. And, and so I am very reluctant to approve this.
Anyone else?
I'm just wondering, it says that we already receive one-day onsite service, correct? And, but we will not increase that with the premium package increase?
Actually, this would shift us away from having somebody onsite on a regular basis. It would only be on an as-needed basis. So, currently, we have that one day a week where somebody's onsite. As I mentioned, with that unlimited support, both remote and onsite, right now, we just have the one day. If something extends beyond the one day, that's going to require a time block purchase to, to make up that difference. In this kind of an arrangement, if something comes up that's more, more difficult problem to address on the support side of things, if it takes, you know, having somebody come onsite, they're going to come onsite. If it takes two days to resolve it, they're going to come onsite for two days to resolve it, and we would have probably, in those kind of circumstances, experienced the savings that we would normally incur expenses on a time block.
But we won't have a scheduled day any longer than...
Correct. Correct. This is, this is intended to be remote in the, in the, at first choice, and then as necessary, they come onsite to whatever extent is required. So, like, if we have, like, right now, we save issues for that one day a week, whereas if we don't have that one day a week situation, we can get it addressed more immediately on a Monday, a Tuesday, Wednesday, if it can be handled remotely. So, it sounds like a decrease from the standpoint of having somebody onsite, and then that's a valid point, but it's actually an uptick in terms of timeliness for getting things addressed, because right now, we don't have that kind of support capability, except for, to the extent we do time blocks and things of that nature. This would allow them to do it...
You don't have remote access capability now.
Monday through Friday. Yes, but they don't do it. It gets saved for the...
You have to purchase.
Yes, exactly. And it gets saved for the onsite day, essentially, so things can oftentimes be put in abeyance and held and just put up with until that, that office hour is, is in place. Whereas, under this scenario, we'd have immediate access to somebody through this remote service that, that would be actually an improvement. It's a little counter too, because we won't have somebody onsite, but we'd get more immediate attention. And then if something requires onsite service, again...
I guess, in theory, I've dealt with remote service, because with our business, and remote service is not exactly immediate.
Correct. I, I mean... More immediate is how I would put it.
Sitting on the phone, waiting for a remote service person is...
We'll have to see how the experience rate is, and that's, Commissioner Mensah mentioned the, the period of time here. It's, it's a limited period of time, 15 months, up to 15 months, and then we're going to be looking at the, you know, rebidding the service at some point in time before that, that time period is up, and we have an opportunity to have a short-term exposure to this new arrangement, see if it's satisfactory, and if it's something that we might be interested in continuing if they win the bid again in the future.
Do we have a, not a plan, but do we have a capital outlay, or do we have anything that lists? I guess I'm looking at Linda, because she's kind of, all of our servers and everything, you know, aging and our, everything. I mean, do we have any kind of a list of what...
I'm in the process of compiling all that.
Because I know you're doing that with a printer, so I was just curious if that's...
It's everything. It's all the equipment.
Okay, so you are in the process of doing that?
Yes.
So, we'll have a better handle on it?
Yes.
Probably around budget time?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Because I would think some of these problems are due to the fact that we do have some old equipment.
We had some old equipment, yes. We've been replacing them.
As it goes along.
It's been four months.
Okay, okay.
And again, getting back to the comment that was made earlier about issues with, with things breaking down, that, you know, it's, it's like everything else in the city, that when we had the financial times that we had, there was deferred investment, basically, because the monies just weren't there. So, we were kind of operating with equipment that was getting old, and, and we've started to address those needs more proactively now that we're in a better position financially. And that's been a, a subject of a lot of work on Linda's part, along with High Tech getting some new equipment put into place here at the city.
Was this inventory you're doing, does it include the, simply the number of, of servers or the number of computers or the number of printers? Or does it include how old they are, what their capabilities are? And are you doing an inventory of the software that's on them?
Yes. All of the above. That's uncompiled. It's taken a little bit to compile. It's been four months now, but I'm near the list of just taking a look at what's there, confirming we actually have it. The last list I had actually, I had some things I knew we had taken off, so we're refining it hopefully by budget time.
Okay. With this increase, you're saying that the service will improve? It'll be quicker? I mean, we've had issues where the fire department's computer has been down for days, there was no communications, couldn't get that, and it took time to get that up. I know that the DDA has a problem a lot of times when they're down, and I know what goes on here. When they're down and your computers are down, you can't function. So, will this, do you believe this will increase service to get that we're not going to be down two, three days at a time?
Correct. That's the expectation.
Okay.
And that's why I mentioned, you know, we have this period of time. It's a short-term period of time. We can evaluate it and see how, how the experience is, see if the cost-benefit analysis makes sense. We're spending a little bit more money with them, about $6,700 over the 15-month period. Are we getting commensurate, or better yet, a even more increase in the level of support that we're receiving from High Tech in, in terms of timeliness and effectiveness and everything else? And that's something that we'll clearly keep an eye on and make sure that it's in force.
When will we evaluate the effectiveness of this? Because I think some people are concerned that with the remote, that we're going to spend a lot of time waiting.
Right. And that's something that, we, we do that on, on an ongoing basis, is how I'm going to put it, right? If we sense things are going in a bad direction quickly, we're going to address it quickly. If it's something that we feel the initial returns are positive, we're going to let some more time elapse and get some more experience with it and, and see how the, the experience goes. But, you know, we have the capability of recognizing that this isn't working out and, and asking High Tech to address it in a different fashion, so...
So, we can, at any point that we feel that it's not effective, it could be canceled.
It's, that's, you know, subject to the terms and conditions of the contract. However, obviously, if they want to continue to do business with, with this, with this city and they have an upset, unhappy client, I think that they'd be willing to take a look at that. If it's a situation where we need to go back to the good old days, I think we could negotiate something along that lines if it need, need to be done, if it needs to be done, so...
Anybody else? Any other questions?
They're, they're a long-term relationship. I think they'll work with us.
Okay. Call roll, please.
Mensah?
No.
Campbell?
Uh, no. I'm a wait.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Krab?
No.
Okay, it fails. So, Rob will be here on Wednesdays?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. 9C. Approval of purchase and payments of invoices. Need a motion?
Move to approve purchases and payment of invoices as presented.
Second.
Pardon? No, it's after. Go ahead.
I would just like the motion to be amended relative to Anderson, Eckstein, and Westrick. That is a, was a proposal, and you can, I would suggest that the proposal be accepted subject to execution of a contract satisfactory to our office. A request for proposals is, is different from a bid, and that's what they sent to you. Normally, we have a contract that will reference that request for proposal, but it will also have insurance requirements and other things that we normally require in contracts with the city.
So, do you want a motion to that?
I just to amend the motion relative to just that one, Anderson, Eckstein, and Westrick, simply to accept the proposal they submitted, subject to execution of a contract satisfactory to the city attorney.
Okay, I move that.
What'd you say?
Subject to what you said.
Second.
Roll call. Are, are there any questions on any of the others I should ask? Commissioner Mensah?
I wondered who, who wrote the grant for the SAW?
AEW submitted the application for us and provided the documentation that went along with the application.
Okay. I just wondered, because, you know, I wanted to thank them for doing the grant. I was kind of wondering if it was our, our little grant expert over there in the corner, Mr., Mr. Wood. And I had another question about the, the hydroflow pump that we're purchasing, and I just wondered if that pump comes with a warranty and some kind of annual maintenance on it? And if, if it comes with that annual maintenance, is that first year of annual maintenance free?
I would have to check into the, the maintenance terms, because I don't, unless Linda has knowledge, we then beyond...
I don't know about the maintenance terms, but I know the...
The guarantee is there. The warranty is there, yes.
Warranty, yeah.
We'd have to do some research on the, what the, what kind of maintenance is involved, but there is a, there is a warranty on, on the product.
Well, I figured there'd be a warranty, but usually, sometimes with equipment like that, they give you a, a year of maintenance on it.
I can tell you that, I, I don't want to take a guess, but I, that's never been discussed with me that anything like that was provided, so I'm not optimistic that that's the case. But I will check into it and let you know next week, or next meeting.
Okay. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Krab?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Okay. 9D is 10A. Request for a second, for Second Chance Network to conduct charitable solicitations within the public right of way on March 10th and March 11th of 2016. No motion, it fails. Sorry. Okay. Consent agenda. Go ahead.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Krab?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
City manager's report.[1671.51]
Glad that we had a short distance between the SAW discussion and the city manager's report, since that's basically what the focus of this is. The Stormwater Asset Management and Wastewater Grant, or the SAW Grant, the city has been awarded a SAW grant in the amount of $1,847,632. This grant was approved with a project scope consisting of two items, the first being development of a wastewater asset management plan. Projected cost is $1,821,382, and this particular project cost, this particular project scope is fully grant-funded. Also, the second piece of it is a development of a stormwater management plan. Projected cost is $35,000. The grant total on this item is $26,250, along with our 25% required local match of $8,750. That makes up the total cost of $35,000 on that item. The primary activity under this scope is the cleaning and televising of our sanitary and combined sewer system, at a cost estimated at approximately $1.2 million. This work is anticipated to be bid and awarded through our normal processes, and this is, make no mistake, going to be a big undertaking, as evidenced by the fact that the grant activity has an end date of October of two thousand and eighteen, or almost three years. On your March seventh agenda, we've recommended award of this piece of that of $600,000 for a contract to AEW for work on this grant, under the purchases and payments of the invoices. This award was basically anticipated and facilitated by the inclusion of our engineering contract with AEW and the application package submitted to the MDEQ, and under this proposal contract that will come out of it, AEW will perform a variety of work, including design and oversight of the bid, and contract for the cleaning and televising of our sewers, as well as completion of the wastewater asset management plan and the stormwater management plan. We're very excited to receive this award. Anytime you can get over $1.8 million for a direct cash outlay from the city of $8,750, that's a good deal, and we're looking forward to having a much greater understanding of both our wastewater system and our stormwater management plans here in the City of Mount Clemens. And I did note that this was made possible due to the approval of the application, sure, November fourth, two thousand and thirteen commission meeting. So, we're very excited about it. It's going to allow us to have a better handle on what's happening in those two systems. We've had lots of commentary from people from the audience about issues with combined sewer systems. Part of the issues that we face with these combined sewer systems is a lack of information, and this SAW grant is going to allow us to have a much better handle on our combined sewer systems and understanding where they are and what their issues are, and how we can go about addressing them to eliminate the issues that come with them. So, we're excited about it, and kudos to the mayor and commission for applying in the first place, and we look forward to spending that wisely and improving our knowledge of our systems.
Thank you. Okay, commissioner comments. Since you're by yourself over there, Denise, so I'll let you go first.
Thank you. I'm going to tell you my usual, where I've been in the last month. I've been to the Rec Bowl. I've been to Paco's. I've been to Bastity. I've been to Paperback Writers, and I've been to Gumbo's, and I have been to Champagne Chocolates, yet again. One of the librarians at the Mount Clemens Public Library did a favor for me and completed some research, and so I went in there with the purpose of buying her a couple of treats. So, how many coconut haystacks do you want to guess that I bought for myself? Too many. But they're excellent, and she was thrilled, and it was a good deal. I want to remind you that there are free radon kits available at the Health Department up on Elizabeth and Grossbeck. Testing is recommended in the winter, because your doors and windows are shut. Those kits are free. Please take advantage of it. The County Board of Commissioners is taking applications for summer legislative internship program. If you have a kid, a college-age student, even a high school student, that is interested in the legislative process, that is interested in politics, that wants to gain experience in the public sector in things like government communication, administrative management, legislative research, and career development, you're going to have, they're going to have mentors on the board. It'll start in May. The deadline for applications is April eleventh. You can contact the Macomb County Commission, you know, board office up in the admin building. The Sheriff Department is also offering the Academy for Seniors. It's a four-week session on Tuesdays. It begins March twenty-ninth. I believe there's still some openings. You will visit all of the operations and learn about all of the operations, including things like the Mace Team and the Marine Division, SET, things like that. It's very informative, and since we have a good contract with them, it, you know, it might help. So, you can call 586-307-9311 if you're at all interested in going through the Senior Academy with the Sheriff Department. And that's all I have today.
Commissioner Kraut?
I first would like to thank the, well, the Mount Clemens Community Schools for coming and making a presentation on the budget. As a former school board member, I know how difficult it is to tell people who have been working for years and years and years that they're going to work for less, and they're going to work harder. It's a really difficult position to be in, and so I wish them luck and an improved budget. So, I'd also, I forgot to thank the Macomb County, I guess, Planning and Economic Development Group would be the people to thank for the Macomb County Business Awards. My husband and I's business won the Startup of the Year Award, and so I wanted to thank them publicly. That was really a great event, and we enjoyed it, of course, since we won. But also wanted to mention that on March fifteenth and nineteenth, I'm going to have my commissioner coffee talk again. It will be held again at John's Family Grill. Am I too close? Is my mic out? Sorry.
No.
No, I'm okay, okay. Sorry, March fifteenth and nineteenth at John's Family Grill at nine-thirty. So, March fifteenth is a Tuesday. If you're working during the day, hopefully I can catch you on Saturday at nine-thirty AM. Let's have a cup of coffee and chat about what's good and going on in Mount Clemens. And I, of course, would just like to say I'm thankful, I'm excited, not thankful, I guess, I'm excited about the upcoming budget talks that we're going to be doing next month, so I look forward to getting information on that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Hill?
I also would like to thank Dr. Pearson for his presentation tonight. It is important to both the city and the Mount Clemens School District that there is a cooperative relationship between our two entities. I appreciate the work the district is doing to improve their financial status, and I hope the community will support their efforts. And, speaking of the school district, the Mount Clemens Coalition for Youth and Families, of which Commissioner Bunton, Mayor Dempsey, and I are all members, held the Second Annual Real Talk Dialogue Day last Thursday for Mount Clemens middle school and high school students. This was an opportunity for students and community members to come together and hear the concerns students have on a wide variety of topics. I was impressed by the leadership provided by the students and the participation of a large number of community members. My impression is that the students enjoyed the opportunity, as I heard many of them comment that they wish the event could happen more often. It was also an opportunity for community members to see that the Mount Clemens students are good people and to eradicate some of the negative perceptions they may have had. I want to commend city administrators for the outstanding job of securing grants to do various projects in the city, such as the grant Mr. Brown just talked about. The various departments of the city have done an excellent job in recent years of obtaining grants for a wide variety of projects that would not have been possible without them. I hope everyone will get out and vote in the primary election tomorrow. Some people do not like to vote in primaries, because they have to declare a party affiliation. I just want to remind people that just because you declare for one party in the primary, it does not require you to always vote for that party. And when it comes to the actual election, you can vote for members of both parties if you choose. The primary is important, because it will determine what the choice of candidates will be in November. It is our privilege and duty to be informed and to vote for the best candidates. Otherwise, you are handing the choices over to other people who may have very different ideas. As always, thank you to the people who come before us to express your concerns. Every person and every opinion matters. Don't forget that daylight savings time starts this weekend. Spring is coming. Thank you. Have a good evening and a great week.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
I have one thing. Several residents, two of them are where at Meyer, asked me to extend a thank you to the street department for, even though we didn't have a lot of snow this year, they were very appreciative of the streets being plowed with the snow that we did have, so...
Yes, that's nice.
Thank you, Streets Department.
And I, too, received a number of phone calls and emails, which I passed on to everybody. And once again, I was prepared, because I was asked to give the information about the Senior Academy, and once again, I was outdone. You know, what can I say? So...
Next time, we'll coordinate.
We'll coordinate next time. So, with that being said, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Roll call.
Hill?
Yes.
Kraut?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Needing adjourn.